I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The first item on this is appeal of a water bill for 12 years.
We haven't had anything like this before, so we've had a lot of interesting water bills before, but I don't know if we've come to some work here to talk about them.
To add some interest to it. We always, the 20-year case of these deals always between $200 and $300. The bill immediately following this from September through December is $266.04. They're like just received $266.04.
It seems like the meter's working.
Well, they're all actual reading.
Yeah, right. But it doesn't seem like, you know, like this, we've had it where, you know, we found that the meter was bad, but it seems like the meter's okay.
Or maybe it picked up from next door.
Well, we send a person annually to check it, if Jim English pays or contends, when more than once to check it out.
Right, and they came back and we knew the building was empty and they checked to make sure there were...
No.
We had no plumbing repairs or anything done. And over the summer, my office is closed for about three weeks, so we're using even less water. We used a fair amount of water, but we were out for three weeks. One of the apartments was completely empty and one pair of tenants are two younger kids from Vermont who are real water conscious. And the third floor, for two weeks it was our kids and for a month and a half, two months before that, another couple from Dobbs with their two kids that also claimed to be water friendly. So, we don't know where it went to unless, and the possibility is there, and this, our driveway is access for the building next door. And I caught them just about ready to drop them. They've been in and out with all sorts of deliveries and everything. We don't have a water faucet down the back. And they were power washing all summer, you know, repointing, power washing. It's possible. And I didn't see anything, but there are plenty of times that I'm not there when they were.
Still a lot of water.
It is. And once, once we had a leak two years ago, and it went to reported to us for about a month and a half. And as soon as we heard about it, we brought the plumber in and he's at that one state, because it was like the faucet was like wide open. At that point, not that it was wide open, our bill was $900.
Yeah.
So, $3,500 is a huge amount of water. So, we can't imagine where it went to.
Do you know what the Burnham Building's water bills are like during that time period?
It's getting...
He was asking me if you know what the Burnham Building water bills are like during that time period?
Oh.
When they were doing that excess.
How many meters does the building have? Do you know that?
Burnham Building?
Yeah.
Try and have to look into that.
I'm sure there's one for library and one for the tenants. One consolidated for the tenants.
I had to ask Jim if it was possible that they accidentally picked up next door, the Burnham Building instead of ours and sent us... It's not possible, but I don't know the technology for it.
Yeah, everything's keyed by serial number. So, the serial number, the meter, so.
You know, I could... Well, I did check with Rosemary. I did ask her today and she didn't meet with workforce management, who's, you know, the manager there. And the person there checked with the people, the workers at the time, and they all claimed that they did not use it. And then we checked also with DQW to make sure that there was no use, you know. So, no one's coming forward to say that they used it or any knowledge of it.
We need to see the bills for both of the meters on the Burnham Building during, probably the, you know, before and after, during and after, just to see if there's any anomalies there. Especially if it's outside power washing, that's taking a lot of water. I don't know, I don't think the other building next to you would have any chance of using that much water.
You mean the building on the other side, not the Burnham, the other side?
That's apartments.
Yes.
I wouldn't think it would use any water.
Yeah, so we can, we can look at that and, you know, give it some more thought and, you know, kind of actually...
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those things where I would say, this is our 10th year, I saw your anniversary pop up, our 10th year on the board. I think those 10 years, we've probably had about at least half dozen kind of strange bills pop up. I would say five of the six of them, or actually maybe all of them, had some kind of underlying leak, you know, it was either a sprinkler head or, some of them were astronomical, you know, like $20,000 or, you know. So, you know, this is just a weird one that there's, I know we, one was a toilet running for, you know, for a quarter. But Jim English, somebody, he found it right away. He's like, you hear that little noise that's your toilet running? And it was like, you know, their bill was 200 and it was like 1,900 or something for the toilet running. So, you know, it's, this is the first time we've kind of had, you know, something where there hasn't been any, you know, kind of, you know, viable theory. And I think it's just, it's just tough to just say, you know, don't worry about it because then every time someone has that high bill, it's going to be difficult. So, so I think, you know, we could take a look at the Burnham Buildings bills and we can, you know, try to come up with something. Appreciate, we appreciate your, you and your patience as we work through this and, you know.
I guess the reason I came, you know, I thought of this particularly was because so often, I don't know what percent of the times, it's the, the outdoor lawn care sprinkler system at the end of the summer. And then it's like you go back, you go, oh yeah, well, that was turned on and it was turned on, you know, by people and I was away for them. And it was, but you don't have a giant three-acre lawn.
Last summer it was particularly wet, so I didn't ever use much water.
Even if it were dry, how much in your, in your back parking lot could you sprinkle for things to... So, I realize the precedent issue is, but it just seemed like a strange outlier and it's, you know, if it were, if your highest bill was a problem was ever 900, I can't imagine that you could have used more than that. But I, I'm certainly happy to think about investigating as Mark suggests.
I only heard incidentally about one other problem that I'm going to have to go find out more about, I didn't get a chance. But it's a problem that happened a while back where it was traced to a mix-up of meters. But I'm not sure what time period that was and I know it was like over five years ago, so.
I can kind of remember something when you're...
I will talk to the person who was mentioning it to me and try to get some more details about what actually...
I think it triggered the audit, if I remember right, which we did an audit of all the, all the accounts.
It turned out that one, I think somehow the, for a period of time or some other, the numbers had gotten swapped.
Yeah, it was an incorrect serial number written down.
Yeah.
But again, you know, that, that doesn't happen and then you get changed back.
It gets mixed up.
After a month, you know, or three months. So, but I remember the situation you're talking about.
But another, but also he doesn't, you know, he doesn't have, I'm assuming he didn't have standing water in the building or around the building, which, given that lot, you know, would think it's not much.
Yeah, not much place to store that much water.
Yeah.
And basements was dry all summer.
Okay, well, we'll look into the...
One more, one more part of the investigation. You get to come back, I guess.
Every time they call you, you have to come back.
I know, and, and great that you, you know, Larry and Brenda, I know you spent a lot of time on this and, you know, this, but I think it's important.
Thanks very much, Colin. So, what it, let's, the next 10 years.
We'll get back to you with the data and if it's, if it's in time, I suspect for the Monday, April 15th meeting, I don't think it's going to take us long to get some more information.
I don't know how many days of power washing were done.
Yeah, we may have to follow up on a few things.
Or the occupancy of the building.
And the days when they were done?
Right.
Yeah, get some more information.
Yeah, okay. As soon as we have it, we'll come back.
Next is review, traps in North Broadway.
Give us a couple of minutes just to get set up here.
Sure.
Just to...
No, I'm going to take that one. Not fair. I'm tired. Thanks, Brenda.
Well, thanks, you know.
It's off then.
How to get the next one?
Okay.
Yeah. Who worked for Maxon?
The contact ID.
Tell me about this, Mary Ann. The legend of Sleepy Hollow is 200 years old.
Oh, yeah?
I got to go to the event in Sleepy Hollow. It's really cool. They had the house forcedman around. There's going to be stuff going on about our theater. The 200th anniversary of publishing of the...
County was not a planning committee for the census.
You youngster.
It wasn't a big anniversary topic.
Okay, so there's this bigger version of this copy.
It was only the, it was, it was only the air, it was only the satellite layer that was breaking up, you know what I'm saying? I couldn't, I couldn't fix it.
I know. I'm glad it's not... It's not, it's not a big thing to me, but the history of this area and also, because the, the story is that it's a Hessian. Well, the Hessians were here from the American Revolution, that were 50 years before that. And to me, that's an interesting story, what happened to those Hessians.
Well, was there something like, that wasn't, did they know what happened?
Yeah, I know, that's what a legend is. And then people were...
Oh, right.
Washington Irving as his... Obviously, I guess. Welcome to the other side of the table.
The janitor's going to...
We just looked.
They'll just start with just an overview. So, this is the rezoning area based on what was designated in the comprehensive plan update. So, it's, it includes six, six parcels. Everything currently is, sorry, go back. Everything is currently zoned 1F40. A few years ago, it was redesigned about as, you know, it used to be 1F20. There's some MF to the north, there's 1F40 to the east that is also owned by one of the property owners involved in here, the Holy Spirit Church. And then to the south, it's still 1F20.
So, I have one question because I'm not sure if I remember, but why was that one block excluded? The one on the top right, the 1F40 that's adjacent to the same owner with the...
You know, we had some conversations early on, I, with, I had some conversations with Larry and Mary Ann. The thought was that it's not immediately on Broadway and this rezoning was focused on Broadway, but it's, it's certainly something that could be considered if you're thinking that that property owner would sell everything as a whole.
Well, a number of the lots are right on Broadway. The problem I have is density. Just as a thought, a lot of what you're proposing is to put caps on density and one of the things that's, unit density and traffic. So, one of the things I think is, is that 1F40 became, developed according to the old densities and stuff, I'm wondering about the impact on traffic there.
So, right now, all of those lots are subdivided into, it's not one lot.
You can't see, that's not one lot, Mark.
No, why is it not one lot?
They're all complying four-acre parcels.
There's six lots there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not, I'm not, what I was trying to make, my point was, I thought that, I thought that, you know, if we're worried about issues, including overdevelopment along, I was saying that some of those lots, like number six does not front Broadway. Number five doesn't front Broadway. So, the argument that the, the unnumbered lot, call it number seven, doesn't front Broadway and therefore should be excluded, doesn't make sense to me because that, to me, is like a, a primary for, for dense development that we're not going to want to have right there at that intersection.
Okay.
So, does anyone else have a feeling?
I can't remember why we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't because we were, the focus was on the large, the, the large lots, on the large lots with big open space on Broadway. And those aren't, they're all, they're...
Well, six isn't, and it's five is not on Broadway.
Six has access to Broadway.
Yeah.
Well...
I think we need to... Six, and what are you talking about, which is five?
Five's the Holy Spirit.
Holy Spirit, six is Abbott House.
Yeah.
Well, they have access through secondary roads, but...
Doesn't five have access to Broadway?
Well, five, so, four, yeah, so they have access.
So, they have access.
That's another way.
That's the reasoning.
All right, well, I need, I guess, from a zoning perspective, leaving that block to go into this, into a higher density than the rest of the area is crazy. It's just crazy stuff.
It's built downtown.
It's only got two buildings on it.
I thought, I thought houses are...
No, they're on the...
No, it's the next one.
The one at the very end has a house on it, but the, the other ones didn't.
Anyways, let's keep going.
So, just an overview, as you know, the property slopes up from Broadway. There are some areas of steep slopes, those are in purple. The only area that has any wetlands on it is the blue line that's going across the top, so it's, it's pretty dry.
Where's the blue line going across the top?
It's Sunnyside Creek, right?
Oh, oh, yeah.
The top right here.
The top of the hill, the top of the street. Yeah, so it's, the peak of the bridge is on the Holy Spirit property and then everything slopes down to Broadway. This is an elevation of 440 and it goes down to an elevation of 210. So, this is an overview of all the existing parcels that are in the rezoning area. So, the lots range in size from one acre to 17.67 acres. The smallest slots are the ones owned by Irvington Equities and then the access piece for the Holy Spirit site. The Stanley Rubensall property is four acres, the KDF Holdings property is 8.1 acres. And then the Abbott House is on the larger end, it's almost 17 acres. The existing building coverages of these lots range from 2.66% all the way up to 10.33% and that's lot number three, the Irvington Equities property, which is only a one-acre parcel. Right now, the FAR on the properties range from .06 to .26. So, on the larger properties, the FAR is relatively low, relatively low building coverage. And then the only ones where they're on the higher end are the lots three and four, which are the, the smaller one-acre parcels.
So, that was a slimmer lot between one and six.
Okay, so this parcel right here is a single-family home right now and that's, that's about a one-acre property. It's currently undersized for the lot. So, what I'm recommending for that lot is to actually rezone it back to 1F20 instead of including it with this rezoning. Because 1F20 is right here and these are all single-family homes and I don't, doesn't seem like that property is ripe for development. And so, bringing it back into this zoning district just makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Which, which road is it that's coming up to that?
That's on Strawberry Lane.
That's Strawberry Lane.
Yes, this is Strawberry Lane and then this is...
Those are the folks that had all the problems.
Strawberry Lane.
Looked right here at the time, yes, visibility right there.
Was the family that...
Yes.
Is it the Americans?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I think it was, I got one.
No, they're right behind, they're right behind Maxon.
Okay, yeah. So, in the draft rezonings, the highlights, so it creates a...
Actually, just go back in there because just, no, to explain to the board which is which property because we know them all by different names.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, I'll do it, you wouldn't know that. Okay, so six is, six, you know, there's the Abbott House. In front of that is what we call, was Maxon property. Next to that is Carafialo. And then what's down there is KDF Holdings is the, is the house that used to be part of the Carafialo property, but it's now, it's a house on Broadway. And then, okay, and then the rest is Holy Spirit.
So, do that again, I'm just...
Yeah, right.
And, like, did I miss one?
No, no, I'm sorry, K...
The one, the number...
KDF is Carafialo.
KF is Carafialo. It's site number two.
The Rubensall one, where it says Rubensall, that's lot one, is the, is the next one.
That's site number one.
Three, Irvington Equities, there's the old Carafialo, the White House.
No, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Brick-y.
That's the, that's the office building, that's the office building closest to Broadway.
Yeah, that's the one. And then, oh, the two Holy Spirit Association and then, and then the Abbott House.
And then the single-family house is the Ravens...
Rabies.
Rabies, right, okay.
Great.
So, this is just an overview of the zoning. Creates a new mixed-use corridor district. The new uses that are proposed are the ones that are reflected in the comprehensive plan update. So, that includes multifamily and townhomes, assisted living, hotels, office, research and design, full-service restaurants, places of worship, membership clubs, bed and breakfast, and small practice medical office. And there are some new definitions proposed to, to the code, a new definition for medical office, large practice. And that is to try to control traffic, a large medical practice, like you might have at West Med is a major traffic generator versus a, you know, smaller family-oriented practice.
Should we call it boutique hotels? Can we use the term boutique hotels in the comprehensive plan as opposed to hotel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we could, I could change.
I mean, it has a different...
But, I mean, there is a, maybe that's not what...
There's a limit on...
There's a limit on the number of hotel rooms you could have that would keep it in the boutique hotel range, so.
I don't know what that number is.
The cap that's proposed in the zoning is 150 rooms?
Yes, I agree with that statement. That's not boutique.
There's also a definition proposed for office use, which, to separate that out from medical office. All of the uses would be special permit uses, none of them would be as-of right?
And that special permit is issued by?
By the planning board. I mean, that's how it's structured. Yeah, I don't know. No, but it, it could be whichever board.
So, no use, no new use is viable without a special permit effectively?
Correct. So, the proposed zoning builds on the existing resource protection regulations that you have in your code. So, that separates any of the steep slopes or gives a, a credit for steep slopes. It takes out any wetlands as developable area. So, that brings down your net buildable site area. So, all of the, any of the residential development that would be allowed under this zoning would be required to prepare a resource protection analysis. And there's some new dimensional criteria proposed for that section that would be applicable to this zoning district. And those thresholds are based on what you currently have in the MF district. So, there's precedent for that. The building coverage for all development would be based on the net buildable site area. So, that would also reduce, will keep development out, steep slopes, wetlands and so on. The max lot coverage would be 25% and the maximum building coverage would be 20%. So, what can happen in that 5% difference is your surface parking, patios, that sort of thing. The maximum FAR is currently proposed at .25. That's based on the gross site area, not the net buildable area.
How does that differ from our current interpretation of FAR if for residential?
I think it's a little different. I think your current FAR may be based on the net buildable area. I'd have to double-check that.
No, I think it's on the net buildable area, but the number, the percent, I think you wanted to know about the percentage.
No, it's a different percentage. I was wondering if it was net or gross actually. I know it's a different percentage.
Okay, I'll look.
There's a, okay. So, there's a minimum setback of 125 feet from, from Broadway for a two-story building and a 250-foot setback for a three-story building. So, either the whole building could be set all the way back or you could have a stepped building that was two stories out the 125 feet and then go up. And then regulations include, design regulations and flexible parking regulations. We don't want to have a situation here where the code requires an excessive amount of parking. We'd want it to be based on the actual use that was proposed.
Some of the sanity check stuff I want to talk about is thinking about the, the bright view proposal as the latest one we had for this area. And they were talking about a three-story building that was, what, was that 200 or 250 setback? Does anyone remember that?
I don't remember. I did, I looked today, I think, what is this one, 250?
250, right, yeah. So, but that was a, a three-story building and, so one of my concerns about is moving any, you know, we have, we need to think, that's not you, but just on the board, but we need to think about whether or not a two-story facade, 125 feet back is, how that's going to impact the open space, the feel of the space. Because you look, there's a 125-foot setback line and you can see that if you were to build a building in that area, if you were on the bright view property, it's extremely sloped in that area, so I don't know which you could get away with, but...
I think you did some depictions. We did, we did. Yeah, she, are you looking for them or... No, FAR is based on gross, gross side area.
Yeah.
And then, then, no, it varies from about .1 to, it's at .12 and a half to 43%.
Yeah, okay.
So, there were two reasons why I had recommended the 125 feet. One is that's the correct setback for Broadway in your code, but also it aligns with the existing building here on the Carafialo property.
The old former, yeah.
Former. And also on this property, there's a pretty flat area right here where there's an existing parking lot. So, if you were to on this site add a new building and keep the existing building, that would be a reasonable site to develop if you just wanted to add one building.
Well, now, in this case, you should, see, this is what confused me because in this case, you showed an additional building, but it's actually on the ridge line right behind the old number two, which is not going to be buildable there. So, I was getting confused why some of the examples were showing places that you knew were already rejected because the amount of, you know, rock removal and impact on steep slopes would occur. So, that new area on two is a steep slope area that's, was already effectively direct right view, was rejected as any kind of development in that area due to both environmental issues but also due to cost of rock removal.
So, you're a little, you're a little purple grid.
It would have to be in the front.
That's what you're getting at, a little purple rectangle.
Right.
So, let's, let's hear it out.
Yeah, I'm explaining that, the concern, more realistic would be that it would in fact be in the front.
Okay, so we can...
Yep.
So, just to go over what gross floor area and what FAR is, so it's the gross floor area divided by the lot area. The gross floor area includes, is measured from exterior faces of the building and includes all of your livable space. And the lot area is measured from property line to property line. So, in terms of what this would look like, these are six different examples of how you, this is assuming this lot is completely flat and no wetlands. But it's, so if you had a one-acre lot that was completely flat with no wetlands and you wanted a .25 FAR and 20% building coverage, these are six different ways you could configure that on a lot. So, it, it essentially encourages you to go up as opposed to go out, which is a way to encourage a developer to...
So, what are the rules on, go back to the previous slide, the rules on FAR for basements? What's the rule on that? The reason I'm asking is because, again, bright view was proposed in a sub-grade fourth floor at one point.
Okay, so if it was a livable space, it would be...
It would be a usable, workable space.
Counted towards your FAR.
So, how are they going to get away with that? How is, how is they proposing?
They would propose their own zoning as well.
Yeah, that's, I guess that was, must have been the way they had to get around it. Okay.
No, well, also, in our code, we only have FAR for...
For residential.
For residential. This proposes it for these other uses.
Okay, good, okay, makes sense.
So, this shows what the build-out is under the existing zoning. So, there's two different development scenarios here. One is if you were to develop it as an institutional use, which is the other permitted use in this district. So, that's the, that's this column here. So, if you were an institutional use, you can have 15% lot coverage, you can go up to three stories. So, it ends up being... So it ends up being a, a maximum gross floor area of seventy-eight thousand square feet. But if you're residential use, uh, there's a variable, um, FAR calculation depending on your lot size and coverage. Uh, so that works out to a range of, uh, point oh-nine FAR on lot two, all the way up to point three-four FAR on, um, lot three. So there's, there's quite a range. I'm sorry, that was, sorry. Okay, so the potential build-out under the proposed zoning, um, it's now capped at a point-two-five FAR. Um, so you end up with a maximum gross floor area of forty thousand, forty-three thousand square feet on lot one, up to, um, and then eighty-eight thousand square feet on lot two, uh, about eleven thousand square feet on lot three, twelve thousand square feet on lot four. Those two lots are essentially built out under the, the proposed zoning, so you wouldn't necessarily see those redeveloped. Um, lot five would, would be about a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand square feet and lot six is a hundred-and-eighty-four thousand square feet. Um, so those are fairly large properties. Those are sixteen-acre and seventeen-acre properties. Once you factor the net buildable site area, um, which is what your maximum building coverage would be based on, that brings down the development footprint. Uh, but the reason that I recommend not tying the FAR to that is that it, um, it really constricts the amount of development that you could potentially build up if you were to tie the FAR to the, uh, net buildable site area.
Actually, would you explain that again?
Sure, so, might be easier with a photo. Okay, so, the net buildable site area takes out any of the wetlands, deep slopes out of your equation. So you want to keep your footprint out of those areas, but you don't necessarily want to keep the developer from being able to go up. So if you were to tie your FAR to the net buildable site area, you'd have to have a higher FAR.
Right, right, I guess.
And on a site that maybe doesn't have a lot of resources, um, that could sort of overinflate the development. So if you tie it to the whole site, um, I think that's a better way of doing it.
It's also how it's done otherwise in the code.
Right, so it's consistent, yeah. Okay, so, on the four columns to the right, those are just conceptual, um, figures of what you could potentially build with that gross floor area. So we took a look at what could reasonably fit on the site in terms of the box and then applied what, you know, average hotel room sizes, um, average assisted living unit sizes to that and then just divided, we apply a factor of fifteen percent to that gross floor area to account for corridors, common spaces that wouldn't be leasable, and then divided the leasable number by the averages for those different types of uses. So you end up with, um, we have in the four columns to the right, the approximately how many hotel rooms you would get on a site, approximately how many, uh, assisted living units you would get, skilled nursing, memory care, or a multi-family conversion. Uh, and some of those sites which are on, on the larger end, um, because of the gross floor area that would be allowed, uh, there's a cap that's in place on the total number of units that would be allowed. So, you know, all the ones that have the one-fifty with the three stars, they hit the cap.
Can you explain the last column?
Yes, so one of the concepts in this draft is to allow the conversion of the existing buildings on the property to multi-family. Um, and that is based on a, a minimum, um, unit size of six-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet.
So this is what they could do without buil- without additional build-out?
Without additional buildings. So if they were to convert the existing building on the site from an office building to a multi-family building, it would have to have a minimum unit size of six-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet. And, uh, that's approximately how many units you could, you could get.
This is a sanity check, you know, when we were talking about Brightview again, we were thinking that the range of units should be eighty to ninety, and we see this. Of course, that was mixed with a memory care unit, right? So it was not just assisted living, if I remember correctly. But it's in the same ballpark that we were thinking made sense for that property.
Yeah, one of the challenges with this rezoning area is you have such a variability in your lot sizes. You go from one acre to eighteen acres, so finding the happy medium can be a little, it works for all the sites.
It's a lot.
It can be a little tricky.
So that hundred-and-fifty number, um, that you said would be capped, is that by your proposal?
By the proposal.
By your proposal.
Yeah, so that's actually in the draft text as a cap.
Look here, there's Google Boutique Hotels, it says it's ten to a hundred units, it's definitely boutique hotels.
Okay, so, so on the, um, boutique.
It's a hotel.
It's a hotel.
Unless we wanted to find a boutique, that was into a hundred.
But boutique rooms have to be three times as big.
No, it's just the sheet count, it's the thread count on the sheets.
Nine. I think, you know, on the, on the number of multi-family conversion, isn't it like a real number? Why would, if it, why would anybody do that? Why, oh, I guess, no, I take that desk, because I can think of something like...
So that's just to establish your cap? And, and it's really for something like the Abbott House? You're not going to take that building down? It already is higher than anything you could build in the village.
Oh, okay, um, okay, but it's, okay. And six is Abbott House?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then all the other, uh, ones that say NA, you need to have a minimum lot size of four acres to be able to even do that. So that's why you couldn't do assisted living on the maker of parcels.
Actually, just, um, thinking back to Mark's original question about a potential number seven to the other Holy Spirit property, I'd sort of be curious to know where it fits into those numbers of, you know, perhaps, Paul Ford, if you can let us know.
I can run that calculation from now on, yeah.
They're all subdivided, one for lots.
They're already, yeah, they're already ours. So, actually, I'm sorry, could we have to do a little more on the, on the conversion thing?
They were subdivided about twenty years ago.
Why would it...
Fifteen, fifteen years ago.
They're odd shaped.
I was wondering what...
What are three and four? Those are the, those are the two smallest, those are the two smallest.
Right.
Why couldn't NA could be converted to multi-family? I understand why it's not applicable for any of these assisted living. I don't...
I'm sure we, I thought I had a minimum lot acreage of four acres on that one as well, but... No, I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't, so am I. I don't know that there needs to be. I mean, because why, what would be the pro- you know, somebody did want to convert that house?
You're talking about to multi-family.
Right, so three and four potentially could be...
Skilled nursing but not home.
No, yeah, just the, it's just the last column, I, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I just would put, no, I would put in, now, we should be now, okay, hold on.
Okay, sorry, I just got my... So right now, the buildings on those sites are, one is a, a eleven thousand square feet and the other is about thirty-five hundred square feet. So you could potentially convert...
Right, that would be, that would be a good number to have, okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I agree. It's good.
Especially if I could be a quarter of it.
Yes.
Okay, so this is getting, uh, this first example is one additional building per lot. Um, this would max out the FAR, it would not ma- max out the, um, building footprint. And this is the second example, this was not, you know, not before, but this is if you were to add one or two buildings to that, so just, mostly just on the Holy Spirit site. If you didn't want to have one large building, they wanted to do two smaller buildings that were maybe multi-family. Uh, and this is what that would, would look like. So this is a bird's eye view going southbound on, um, Broadway. The ones that are labeled five A and five B are the Holy Spirit properties, six is Abbott House, um, four is the former Carrick Yellow property, one is the Maxon property, and two is the Brightview site. Uh, so these properties...
Where's this intersection though? Is this from a drone above, 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 sunny side?
East sunny side, roughly.
But you're, you're higher than you would be in...
You're higher than you would be in, in real life. So this is real life, sure, it's the existing...
That one?
Yeah.
That's the Holy Spirit Conference Center.
Oh.
So this is, this is Broadway.
I never saw that.
Got to know the right answer.
So one of the limitations, not using, this was all done, it was SketchUp and Google Earth, and one of the limitations of that software is if you get too close, um, the buildings getting, and the trees get really pixelated, and so it's, you can't get an accurate street view from it. But, um, so this is Broadway, and yeah, that's the Holy Spirit property.
But again, one, two, and four, the, the feeling I'm getting, you know, is there very tall in the front that's facing Broadway, and then they power down as they go up to the hill.
So all of the examples in this concept plan are three stories. Uh, this is what it would look like, the bird's eye view looking straight out from Broadway. So you can see the existing, um, that's the existing building on the Brightview site. So you can see, in context to that, it's really, they're really not much taller.
Where's Broadway?
The Broadway's running this way.
So we're somewhere above the...
To your above. This is, it's a bird's eye view.
So that green stripe near the bottom is the aqueduct, though?
Yes.
This way?
Aqueduct.
This is the aqueduct. Broadway's about right here.
We're in the...
Okay. And the, and the number two is, is the place that, that you were saying, Mark, is a really critical... So it more likely this, that's, that's would be right.
That's not a, a rocky...
But it could be three stories if it was that close.
It couldn't be three stories if it was within a hundred-and-twenty, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. But those are all, yeah, those are all two stories. This is the northbound from Broadway, so again, this is the, the Abbott House property. Um, that's the Maxon property. And then in the back there is the Holy Spirit properties. This is an example of showing one new building per lot. So in this example, we use the, basically generally, the footprint of the existing development. So in this example, it would be all new construction. This is maxing out the development footprint as opposed to, um, maxing out the FAR and going, just, just going up. Um, so in this case, uh, you're looking at mostly, uh, well, it's a range of, on lot one, it's one-point-two-eight stories, so the front half is one story, the back half is two stories. Um, and then some of the other larger property is the, uh, it's two and a half stories. So where you see the little line is where the, the portion would go up to, to two stories. And in all of these instances, we have the one-story on the Broadway side and the two-story or the third story, um, in the back.
So they become tear downs?
So this would be a tear, this is a tear-down scenario. So you can see, this is Broadway here, another bird's eye view, but the buildings would be stepped back and up. This is the east view, so again, this is, Broadway's running right about here.
So how would we force it to step up only because they are, it's rebuilding and they are trying to maximize?
So in this one, I wanted to show the worst-case scenario for the building coverage. So that's the twenty percent, and then you'd max out the FAR, so that's what makes you the step-up building.
Yeah.
I don't think this is the most likely scenario. I think it's more likely to have a smaller footprint and go up to two or three stories.
Is there any way to get visuals without the trees and leaf? So that we could see what it's going to look like in the winter?
Yes, I can show you, um, I can show you what these look like before. Uh, they're flat, but, yeah, I can...
It's worse than that though, because this is not a real, you're not seeing this except from a helicopter.
Yeah, you're in a helicopter.
Yeah, I mean, this is actually prob- this is actually more than you would see.
This makes it look worse.
It makes it look worse, it makes it look worse.
Yeah, because you're in a helicopter, you're not on the road or walking.
Yeah, I have the model, I can, I can pull up the model as well and give you a better idea.
So what do you, just, just in form of, what do you do in the code to force more of a layer cake approach rather than a monolithic three-story buildings? Is there something you can do to...
What we have, what we have in there right now is the setbacks for, you know, the variable setback for your height. So that's one thing to give you a layer cake approach, um...
But obviously, the buildings at, uh, Abbott House, uh, don't have that characteristic, right? There's no Broadway footage, uh, footage, so...
Right, so in that case, you could potentially have, um, a three-story building that would just, you know...
Well, obviously, yes, I...
I know these are very sort of monolithic looking things.
Right.
But, 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 you know, not being architecturally inclined, what, one of the concerns I'm thinking about is maybe, maybe forcing redevelopment of, of structures that don't necessarily fit in with the, you know, existing architecture that's surrounding it. Like, how do you get a layer cake in a colonial style home? Or, or, I'm thinking about what we also have...
Right.
People have expressed that they want Broadway to look like when they're driving down. And one of the nice things about that White House is it looks like a White House that fits in, you know, even though it's outmoded and that needs to be replaced. But I'm just worried that these sort of regulations may be forcing sort of a different kind of architecture to, to fit in.
This type of building would require a lot more grading and excavation than if you were to have a smaller footprint and go up. Um, you know, one of the reasons I'm suggesting a larger building coverage than what, you know, if you were to have a building coverage that was directly proportional to your FAR, if you had a building coverage of point two, if you had a building coverage of twenty percent your FAR, and the proportional FAR would be like point-six FAR, but by bringing the FAR down to point-two-five, uh, you're allowing some flexibility there of either adding, keeping the existing buildings on the site and adding one new building, or if you were to redevelop, I think it encourages you to go up as opposed to going out. And then there's also design regulations within the proposal that includes, um, architectural features and tying it to the character of the community as well.
Remember, if you remember Brightview, they did have two and three stories, but they had some of the three-story areas setback. And they kind of unified it, kind of make it look like a cluster of smaller buildings stylistically.
Eventually.
Eventually, right. But that's when they got to, I'm just... Whether or without, that's where they ended up.
This is the northbound view of that same layout. So this third example is if, um, this is, you go, uh, probably the multi-family route. You had a series of buildings, uh, townhouses maybe, or multi-family. Um, so in this example, uh, there, all the buildings are three stories. It does not max out the development footprint on any of the lots. Um, and just, and this also assumes full, full redevelopment. So again, you know, it looks, uh, from a bird's eye view, you're, you're seeing a lot of buildings. When you're down at street level, you're not going to be, be seeing the massing at this level. Uh, this is the head-on view, and then this is the northbound bird's eye view. I can pull up the, the model. Actually, I have it here. Oh, you know...
Do you have to be connected? We have, we have public...
It's the internet.
Well, we have public Wi-Fi here, if you want to.
So choose, um, urban public?
No, no.
And then there's a password, which is public password. It's, it's all lowercase, Irvington. One oh-five-three-three.
I apologize if this makes anyone dizzy, this is, I'm a dizzy. I think you can do it, walk, walking around with your phone. There we go. Okay, so to get down to more of this street view level...
We're still flying.
We're still, still flying. Yeah, sometimes it gets lost when you drop them. So, all right. Technical difficulties. I will do some other shots that are, uh, better. We'll try to...
That was a street view, I saw.
This is a street view, but it loses, it loses the building. Are you losing buildings? So, um...
Do you hear that wall?
But you could, you could see, but it gives you a better idea of where everything is on Broadway. So one of the, um, so this is that site where you were concerned about the building being behind. It is possible that it would be right in here instead where the parking lot is. Um, but as you can see, as you go down Broadway now, it's, you really can't see very far back at all when you, um, don't worry. All right, well, who is that?
That's when he wasn't cutting his lawn.
Yes.
Someone's making it, it's like, you know?
All right. Technical difficulties. All right, well, so, anyway, because of the way it slips back, once you get back, back behind that original row of buildings, you're really not, you're really not seeing much. So you're seeing a lot more in this bird's eye view than you would in reality.
That's really hard to tell, though.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Yeah.
I, I think this is potentially useless in terms of, I, not, this isn't a criticism of you at all, but in terms of having a sense of what the...
What?
What? No, no, what I'm starting to say is that in terms of trying to decide the visibility of the massing, if you're, you know, fifty feet up in the air, that's a much different experience than if you're at ground level.
It is. Um, so what we could do is some site sections to give you an idea of how everything sets back, um, if that would be helpful.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna do it different ways of visualizing.
Yes, exactly.
Actually, let me, I'll send you, Brightview may actually have done some, um, good ones, some street view, what, what, um, tools they used, I don't know, but maybe you'd be able to tell, and I, I'll, I'll send them to you.
Okay.
Are, are we gonna talk about the architectural elements that Larry Wonky brought up, and also the, see, anything related to the preservation of those, um, historic buildings? Or is that not part of your domain to discuss?
So there are, um, design regulations included in the draft, draft zoning that relate to the lighting, landscaping, and screening.
Can you show?
Yes, those are all starting on page four of the draft zoning that we emailed. Um, I have one at...
I have it probably over here, but it's just, some capacity on this.
Can I have one at your copy?
This is, this is page...
Page four of the draft zoning.
I think I have a different thing in front of me.
No, this is the memo, this is the zoning, don't get on it. It's the same thing, just keep, you're looking at this recovery, then it's gone, and then the zone.
Fine regulations.
Okay.
So it includes, um, lighting regulations, all lighting would be dark sky compliant, non-cocceified foot candles, which is consistent with residential lighting. Uh, landscaping and screening would be required. Um, new utility lines would be underground as they went into the site. Um, access driveways and retaining walls, uh, there would, retain walls greater than three feet in height would be prohibited within 125 feet of Broadway. But, so, uh, I don't know if you've seen some developments where they've, in order to maximize the flat area of the site, they've got large retaining walls that come all the way out, so that's the purpose of that. Um, there could be a situation where you have stepped retaining walls that, that you flip. You'd have to have a space between them before you could have the three. Um, the following design elements would need to be considered. Building façades shall be fast in scale to present a varied appearance at street level, and shall be designed to give individual identity to each unit or section of units. So what that means is if you had a large building that was, had townhouses, um, you would need to have a stepped or varied facade, so you wouldn't end up with just a large block. Um, the design shall consider the space taken proportion of window and door opening space or other aspects of building penetration, as well as color, textures, and the general nature of the exterior materials and treatment, including those ornament and trim. So that's, no, just blank façades, you need to have a variety of materials. New, new constructions shall be of a design that complements the existing character of the neighborhood and community, and shall use materials that are compatible with the neighborhood and historic character of the village. Uh, blank wall exposure shall be limited, so that means you can't just have a wall that doesn't have any windows or doors. It needs to have, there. Um, the design shall consider variation of roof heights, the use of pitched roofs and other roof elements such as cross cables, dormer windows, provide visual interest to reduce the scale of the building. For adaptive reuse properties, any modifications for fire, safety, or access, if there's fire escapes, elevator shafts should be located on the side or rear of the building. So if any of these buildings were converted to multifamily and they needed to add an elevator for ADA, um, it could just be put on the front of the building.
And they notice there's dark skylighting within it makes more...
Kind of that, the historic, if, if you look at the bottom of the page on the considerations and granting a special permits, it says existing built, one of the things you have to take into account is that existing buildings that reflect the historic character of the building should be maintained or adapted to be used to the greatest extent...
Okay.
Ah, here's the other thing. Existing stone walls should, you need to take right.
Sorry, I missed an effort.
On the bottom of page five.
Yes, I think that's what counting together.
Okay.
So, before we talked about giving some, or elsewhere in our code, do we not have given some sort of net benefit for, uh, maintaining historic structures, or was that just on a case-by-case basis, like at, uh, Denardville?
That was, that's not in here.
I understand.
Yes, it was just in that zone.
Yeah.
I mean, we talked about doing something that would actually encourage people to maintain the existing buildings. Right now, there's no net benefit in maintaining the existing buildings.
Well, I accept that it's a requirement to gain a special permit.
Do you think like a density bonus?
No, I don't know what I'm thinking right now, but...
Yeah, I mean, we did give a bit of a thought, but, that, I think there's something we could get back to, but I, I, as I recall, that was sort of, we were trying to make it work.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, there's not that many properties where, I mean...
I mean, the real way to protect these buildings is to designate them. And that's, and we did pass that, that...
Yeah, we're not gonna designate them against the owner's interests.
Right, yeah, that's true. But there is, I don't know, that, that's a protection, that they have to reflect the historic character of the building, shall be maintained or adapted to be used to the greatest extent applicable. I mean, sort of not, you know, not, short of designating it.
And you have both the planning board and the architectural review board involved in this.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we just...
Yeah, so then...
Yeah, did we have to go to those things?
Um, so, just the planning board during its site development review of a proposed erection or exterior alteration of a building or structure, a mixed-use corridor district, shall refer the application to the Board of Architectural Review for comments prior to issuance of a decision to approve or deny an application. This referral shall not limit any other powers granted by the Board of Architectural Review under the Village Code.
Which, the reason that was put in, because ordinarily, you can go to the Architectural Review Board later, and also, the planning board is asked to be looking at these things that it doesn't ordinarily look at, or some of the stuff that looks at, but some it doesn't.
It has more teeth if it's part of the special permit, to, to design regulations, so that's why it's in this one.
In the past, the problem's been exactly, when does the ARB get a chance to talk about it? You know, if it comes too late in the process, it's too late in the process.
So in this case, it would be during the special permit review process, so before the special permit, it's like planner issues, it would be earlier on.
Yeah, it's your second one. Yeah, we, that came up, I think, I think we got this from another section of the, of the three-album building. We brought that in.
Right.
Well, I, I would keep Mark's thought, um, active about, um, some kind of bonus or special consideration for, um, the property that has a historic building on it and, and what's done with it. Um, I mean, it would be nice if the owner would say, yeah, but we'd like to designate it, um, as a local landmark, and then go through that process in our law, but if that didn't happen, then is there some greater advantage to the owner to treat it with respect beyond, you know, beyond is practicable or whatever the...
Building, I think building, what you just hit, so if somebody has a property that we would like to designate, right, we ask the owner, the owner says, no, then the owner has to go to the planning board and the architectural review board and convince them that this other use that requires taking down the building we would like to designate is really worth it, right?
Right, or, or, or...
To give you an example, on the, on the, um, the Brightview application on that carefully owned property, I don't know if you know, but there's some, there's a nice stone building right on the...
Right on Broadway, yeah.
And then there's two really nice ones in the back.
Okay.
And, um, we would like them, the village would like them not to be taken down. And, and there may be other, there may be other things on other properties, but that's just the one that...
Those ones that are close to your own.
Yeah, and, and so, I, actually, it wasn't just undeniable, I think on that one, we also talked about some kind of, um, um, you know, whether a, a coverage bonus or something. They wouldn't, they wouldn't count, and I'll, I'll look for what we did on that, and I'll, I'll, I'll look.
What about affordable housing?
We also talked about them, yes, being used.
We, we have language for different kinds of bonuses, you could have a bonus for keeping an historic, I forget, but, but there was, I think, for their property, and then it didn't go forward, so I'll, I'll look for it and send it to you, okay?
So...
Which one, we talked about something along those lines.
Yeah, exactly, I don't know what it is, I don't think it should be dismining the more coverage, 'cause that worked against us at the...
No, I would say, instead of giving more coverage, give more MAR.
So, um, the question, I, yeah, 'cause we got maybe overly dense at, uh, on the feet property, when I think it went above twenty, uh, point two, I think it went to, uh, above 20%, right? It was like 22% by the time everything was in.
And that's what that created, I'm guessing, that this property down the bottom could...
Yeah, I know that.
It's very creative.
So, um, my question was about affordable housing. Which of these uses, and Mary, I knew probably could know the answer from, based on the code, but which of these uses would require affordable housing compliant?
Well, any, any development in multifamily that's got more than five.
Right, but that's not assisted living, right? That's, it's only, it would only be apartments or condos, or whatever, or...
Right, it would be the, the way the code reads now, um, it would be any, any dwelling, dwelling unit.
It would be the, the three or four, more family conversions, the attached single family, and the multifamily dwellings.
And not the assisted living?
And not the assisted...
Accepting, didn't we say independent? I thought...
Yeah, independent would have, it could have, you could, you could have a, you could have an affordable requirement for assisted living. You might wanna write, if you haven't, you might wanna write in.
Yeah, I looked into that after our last conversation, and I couldn't find a precedent for it for assisted memory here.
What about independent living?
Independent living, I think, yes.
Yeah, independent living definitely would.
That would be just like a condo, then, right?
Yes, just like a condo.
So we skipped over the parking regulations, I'm not sure if you have any questions about that. It would be 1.5 spaces for dwelling unit for attached single family, multifamily unit, uh, one space for 100 square feet for small practice, this is all on page five in the, in the middle of the page, um, one space for 150 square feet for small practice medical office, one space for 250 square feet for office space, and then for all other uses, the applicant shall provide a parking demand study based on the Urban Land Institute shared parking methodology, Institute of Transportation Engineers, or American Planning Association, recommended parking ratios, or existing conditions data from similar operations in the Hudson Valley region. So really, it's, it's putting the onus on, on the applicant to demonstrate what their needs are, so you're not overbuilding the parking.
So I have a question. On some of these larger buildings, I mean, and I know that everyone's gonna gasp at me, but what about if we allowed underground parking, some great parking to get, so there's not open-air parking lots? How, what changes would that, besides having to change the definition of building height and...
Right, so...
Actually, no, because it's not a living space.
It's not a living space.
Oh, okay.
So underground parking, I think, would currently be allowed in their code, but one of the things that I did propose is, um, there is a prohibition on parking decks currently in the code, so notwithstanding the provisions of 24-55, parking decks are permitted to be constructed, provided that they are fully shielded from view, from all public rights of way and neighboring property lines. Any parking deck shall be fully screened by a liner building or topography. Landscaping alone shall be deemed insufficient for screening purposes. So a liner building means that you have a parking deck that's fully wrapped by a building facade, so you're not seeing an open parking deck on any side. These sites, because of the topography, they'll limit themselves to building them into the topography so that you would be able to physically shield it from, from view.
So either build a separate structure, integrated structure, or build in the basement, one of the...
Right.
I'm using...
So you could have a situation where you have a liner building that, you know, goes around the parking decks in the back, and maybe you have the community pool on top, so that kind of a situation, so you'd have stepped parking, but it wouldn't be visible.
I guess I'm just enthusiastic about removing surface parking wherever possible.
Yes, I, I agree with you, Mark.
That's why we suggested something like this be included, or considered, anyway.
And there's not, it's not, there's not a huge amount, between the 20 and the 25% coverage, 'cause it also includes...
It includes everything that is...
Driveways and areas and stuff, so there's not a lot of room for big parking lots.
I thought the driveway's worth coverage, in coverage.
Yes, they are.
They're covered under the, the development coverage.
They are considering coverage, and then if you look at single-family homes, it says that they don't, you don't...
That's, okay, fine, thank you.
But they are covered.
Avoiding looking at a whole meadow of cars would be nice.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna do that, you do have to allow for...
Yes, some...
Some other, yeah.
Some greatly screened, um, you'd never know it was a parking structure, structure, of which we've all seen pictures from Seattle and elsewhere, but do an amazing job.
We cover the next section. Um, on page six, there's, we would be adding mixed-use corridor.
Oh, could I, I mean, I wanted to say, I, I thought I found this before, I know, this, I don't think it's, um, I think it would be nicer to have a more descriptive...
Oh, a different name?
Yeah, 'cause it's a mixed-use corridor, it's not really that long a corridor, you know? So, I, I just think a more, a...
Yes, some greatly screened, you'd never know it was a parking structure, structure, of which we've all seen pictures from Seattle and elsewhere. Do an amazing job.
We covered the next section. On page six, there's, we would be adding mixed-use corridor.
Oh, I mean, I wanted to say, I thought I found this before. I know, this, I don't think it's, I think it would be nicer to have a more descriptive...
Oh, a different name?
Yeah, because it's a mixed-use corridor, it's not really that long a corridor, you know? So I just think a more, a name more descriptive of what it is, like, you know, the North Broadway Zone, you know, something like that. Yeah. Anyway, so we don't get too locked up on, too locked into that language.
Yeah, let's just, I think I had it as North, as Broadway corridor, but then we said it's too long.
No, you have Broadway corridor, and I said, but it's not the whole Broadway corridor, and it's not really a mixed-use, so does anybody have any other ideas? All I can think is like, you know, North Broadway Zone, you know, it's not the whole Broadway.
Eastern.
Northeast Broadway.
Yeah, all right.
Let's go to Montgomery's.
Okay. So the next section is just whatever name we end up settling on, it would be added to that section. On page seven, this is a recommended section that would affect more than just this zoning district. Any change of use that would, by virtue of the new use, result in any increase in the generation of traffic or parking demand, that would trigger site development review by the Planning Board. So if somebody...
That's literally reading what page you're saying.
On the top of page seven, the double...
Change of use.
So everything that's double underlined is an edit to your existing zoning, so everything above that line is what's currently in your code.
It tells you when the site development plan approval is required. And she would add any change of use that would result in an increase in the generation of traffic.
So if you, for example, one of these...
That's what she said.
Oh, this is not, this is general, right?
It would apply, it would apply to this line.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a suggestion.
And the reason I'm suggesting that, if somebody were to adaptively reuse one of these buildings and that didn't require any change to the facade, that may not otherwise trigger Planning Board review, and there may be instances where you want to take a look at it, have an opportunity to upgrade the landscaping, fix the parking lot, we could do about it better.
Well, do you want some new, when you want parking? Didn't you have a provision in there about parking?
Excuse me.
Oh, no, what was it? The traffic generation?
Yes, so...
Oh, yeah.
That was related to the caps.
What was, what generate, what meant a significant increase in traffic?
Yes.
That's page six, top of page six, is greater than 100 new trips, is that some sort of standard?
So that is...
New trips is a lot.
It does sound like a lot, but that's actually what, what, and it's during the peak hour. That's tied to DEC's guidance for what could be a potential significant impact that requires further investigation.
Well, that would definitely be a problem during school peaks.
So if they said they estimate 90, then you can't, then you can't object on that basis? If they, if they're below the threshold of 100, then you can't be objected to on that basis, is that correct?
Right, I mean, I would just anticipate requiring, if something was up at 90 under secret, you could ask for analysis of the impacts during a secret process, but that wouldn't be the basis for...
Well, here's the thing, Riley, this is the single most bottleneck section in Irvington beyond, beyond maybe Main Street at rush hour and morning.
No, this is worse.
This is, because it's got High School Hill and High School intersection, and it's got the Main Street intersection, and it's got...
So one of the...
Around five, between five and six.
So one of the things that figures into this is what the actual use is, so if you have a use that doesn't have a high peak hour traffic generation...
Except when school gets out, that's peak hour.
Well, right, so what you would have the applicant do is prepare a traffic impact study as part of your review of the application.
Regardless.
And during that process, they would establish, based on ATR counts, what the peak hour is for that corridor.
Yeah, you know the problem, though, Ashen, I think, I think it was nice to try to define what a significant increase is, but I think by putting it in the code, you're locked into it. So if, you know, the planning board feels that's a significant increase, that, that the applicant would be able to say, wait a minute, it's fewer than 100, so you can't say there's a significant increase. So I think putting that, I think you could leave...
If we take out the 100, then I would, I would add a significant increase that can't be mitigated, because they may have a significant increase in traffic, but if they're proposing mitigation measures, I think...
But they'd have to mitigate anyways in the seeker, right?
Right.
So you mean anything that the Planning Board or the committee called out as being a major issue would require mitigation?
Yeah, no, but if it read just will not result in a significant increase in traffic above present, above present levels, and...
Then they could do anything.
They couldn't do anything, because those are mostly empty, they're mostly empty or underused properties, or used by, like Abbott House has virtually no traffic, so somebody else wants to come up, there's going to be a significant increase in traffic. So that's why it would be important to add that language.
Right.
Unless it can be mitigated, or whatever is discussed. I think that might be better, and then not, not necessarily saying it's 100 new peak hours.
Throw into this, we're also talking about reuse and reconfiguration of the Route Nine corridor with different lanes and bike lanes and turning lanes, and, you know, so that's going to be happening around the same time as all of this, and this, that, I think, just argues for not locking us into a particular number.
Okay, I understand.
Because the significant use might change if we have one fewer lane on Broadway.
Right. Have you been following that whole proposal? It's all related to the new bridge, and there's a whole study of Route Nine corridor.
I tried a couple times.
There's a, there's a... A whole lot of things about bikes and how you get off the new bridge, there's bike and pedestrian on the bridge, off the bridge.
So where are we?
Up and down, in and out. Changing lanes.
That's okay.
Think more complicated.
So we just finished the top of page six. We already covered the bottom of page six, and we've covered seven. So then the last, page eight, were the changes that would be made to the Resource Protection ordinance. And what it does is it adds, we'll change the acronym, we changed the name, but it adds the density factor for this new district, and that was, that's proposed to be 5,000 square feet, which is the same as the MS district in the village right now.
You see?
The muck.
We'll change that. And then it also updates the definition of site capacity in that section to include, so right now, your site capacity analysis is expressed in dwelling units in the residential districts, and either dwelling unit or floor area in the business district. Since this district allows both floor area and, both business and residential uses or commercial residential uses, it's added to the end of the business district, so that site capacity is divided in floor area and dwelling unit. So there's a new section that would be added to the Resource Protection Code to define what those capacities would be. For an attached, single-family and multifamily uses, the site capacity in the mixed-use corridor district shall be the net total area divided by the density factor of 5,000 square feet, rounded down to the next lower number. And that's the same language that's used elsewhere in that section of the code for residential uses. For all other special permit uses, the site capacity in the mixed-use corridor district shall be the gross site area in square feet multiplied by the maximum FAR of .25 and rounded to the nearest whole number. The resulting number would be a maximum gross, or would be the maximum square feet of gross floor area permitted on the site. So if you were to consider a bonus for preserving historic texture or adding affordable housing, I think that's, this is a section that we would update to capture that FAR bonus. And then in the, in the next section, it would be updating subdivision of land, it would update the recreation factor to include this new zoning district, and in that case, again, it's proposed at 6,500 square feet, which is the same as the...
I have square feet.
Sorry, 6,500.
No, this is the dollars.
The dollars, sorry.
Yeah. Did you really mean 6,000? I think you meant 6,500, right?
Yes, I meant 6,500.
That's a right feet per unit. And 4,000, that's a new, it's just moved.
Oh, yes. Just so it stays in, stays in numerical order.
So how does everyone feel about this kind of, I mean, I'm glad there's a maximum unit density, but some of these properties supporting 100 units, it's like, it gives me pause. I understand that the ground can support that amount of units, but can the village area, that area support? If some of these sites get burnt and built out, you're talking about 300 units with potentially larger areas, and then you're talking about the impacts on traffic, you're talking about the impacts on, on school district and so forth and so on. This is...
So if it were a hotel, I guess that wouldn't be school.
Right, nothing is 150 for, as if for... Oh, and so you know which chart you didn't go on?
Everything.
The, the, the residential development. Yeah, that's in your memo, not in the zoning.
Mary, what page do you want?
It's, if you go to her memo, it's right before the pictures, it's page... So that tells you how many...
So this tells you how many units you could get on each...
How many?
So it would be, the maximum would be on the, on the Abbott House property, it would be 105, which works out to be six units per acre.
Oh, these were non-residential, I guess.
Yeah, this is residential, how many residential you could get.
Right. And then on the smaller two lots that are both about acres, nine to eight units, which is nine units per acre. On the max on property, it'd be about 34 units, which is eight units per acre. And just for comparison, on the lower table, table five, I pulled the tax records on a bunch of the developments that are currently in the village, and, you know, there's a range of some of the older developments, the MS zone just to the north of the site, that's currently 88 units in the one complex, and 109 units in the other complex, and that's 17 units per acre and 12 units per acre. So this is significantly less, so it's, you know, it's higher than some of the more townhouse style developments in the village, like the ones on Valley View Road and Richmond Road, but it's, it's not significantly greater. It's certainly significantly less than what's just north of the site.
So if you're talking about impacts on the schools, Mark, those are the numbers to look at.
Yeah, this is trying to check. In terms of, yeah, I, you know, if you think of a hotel with 150 rooms, that seems like a lot, I, I agree.
But it's not the same as...
But not, not the same as a school.
I think we're talking about people telling you 100 max.
So go back to that, if you call it a boutique hotel, it has to be under 100.
Well, there's two different things we could do, where if we could re, if we could change the definition and we could change the maximum.
You could call it a hotel, and then...
Call it 100 for the last, yeah.
Yeah, and but no hotel can have more than 100 rooms or whatever, yeah.
So one of the other items that's in here to prevent, you know, some of these larger properties from being subdivided and then individually maxed out, is on page three, the minimum lot requirements, if you were to subdivide any of these into a new lot, would be 80,000 square feet, so that reduces the, double what you have right now.
Oh.
So that, that's on page three.
That's in the memo of the zoning.
Of the zoning, I'm sorry.
Go back the other way.
Sorry, going back and forth. So in the bulk regulations, and that's to discourage the subdividing and then building, maxing out of individual sites.
Definitely worth protecting against. We did have that as an issue, I'd say, earlier.
So just to back it up a little bit and look at the big picture, we had a comprehensive planning process, and we wanted to accomplish certain things in that area.
Right.
And what this does is try to enable that to happen, but with the maximum protection to the various factors that we are also committed to protecting.
Exactly, so the goal is to have a setback from Broadway, to make sure the development's not right out of Broadway, improve design restrictions, it increases the allowable uses in the area that are consistent with the uses in the hot plan, but proposes caps so that they don't push you over the traffic threshold, that's been a big concern.
Ashen, let me just say something, now, you say that this does not, no, this, you said, does this propose a maximum protection? No, it doesn't propose a maximum protection. You have to decide, is this the kind of, enough protection?
With wrong words. With protections consistent with allowing the goals that we said we wanted in the comprehensive plan. You can't say, we have a comprehensive plan that permits all these other stuff that don't, don't change a thing, you know, so...
But I mean, this doesn't mean you couldn't say that, well, if you're guessing about the setback.
I mean, I'd say we want greater protection in the direction that we talked about, meaning your proposal, or we could say less.
You could say you want more, a greater setback, you could say...
Yeah, I mean, there's, you could say these buildings, we don't want buildings this big, or you could live with, I guess the thing is, does this seem about, does this seem about right?
That's the question, does this seem about right?
And I think, Ashen, you decided it seemed about right in terms of the uses, right? That these uses could work, these uses at this, these uses at these levels are, you know, the caps that are in there, the 150 unit caps are reasonable caps for a viable project. It might not work for an individual property because of that particular constraints. So, I mean, one thing we can take another look at, if the Board thinks the coverage is too high or too low, that's something that can be adjusted, if the FAR is too high or too low, that can be adjusted.
I'm more concerned about the setback from Broadway.
Setback from Broadway?
And, you know, I'd rather have, allow a little bit higher FAR and still, I'm not saying that .25 isn't, but it seems about right for what you're doing, but I think that the setbacks from Broadway are the critical.
So just as a point of reference on lot, the existing building on lot three is about .26 FAR, so that building on that lot maxes out that lot.
Which one? The white building. So when you say viable, you mean if some, someone who owns that property or wants to develop it, if the controls are so draconian that there's nothing viable economically to do with it, that's not, is that your, the way you're looking at what's viable?
So I'm, I'm looking at what, when I suggested the unit caps of 150, I mean, most of the, a standard hotel going in would be around 100 units. A assisted living facility, those run around 90,000 square feet. So, and then, so that's, I mean, that's where some of these caps came from, was just that 150 was a reasonable cap for a, for a project, that wouldn't push you into the traffic generation of the 100 units, the 100 peak hours, the 100 vehicles in the peak hour.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is if you, if you suggested 150, say, hotel rooms in this location, and we're thinking, hmm, no, 100 sounds better, in your objective opinion, does that make it not a viable economic investment opportunity for somebody who might want to build a hotel?
No, I don't think I could say that. No, I don't think I could say that.
There'd be a point.
There would be a point.
There would be a point, we said we don't want any hotel bigger than twenty-five rooms.
Right, that's what I.
You're just saying in a hundred, you don't.
In a hundred, I don't know.
Well, that also depends on property prices.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's urban gent and there's wherever, but I, I guess I'm, you know, obviously a developer can say, you know, we can't do this unless you give us a hundred and fifty-five, and say, but that's, that's not an objective person saying that. So I'm looking for somebody who's professional, making the opinion about what is an, and maybe, you know, I'm.
It's, it's hard to answer that question without knowing, you know, what was paid for the property, what the construction cost is going to be, and what the site constraints are, there's a lot of variables that go into that.
Because we obviously want to protect our community to the greatest extent possible, but we also don't want to be stuck totally in the past and say, nothing can ever change here.
Right, I mean, these caps are.
Mark was bringing up, but we don't need one even positive, bring a proposal, that must be some kind of derelict building.
That's kind of the whole reason of doing this, though.
Yeah, yeah, that's realism. Right, 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 and I, I know that's, that's, but I'm just trying to.
So these, these numbers were, were reasonable, the one hundred and fifty cap were based on, um, industry trends in what's being constructed right now in this region, approximately what's the maximum size of that type of building that's being built.
And sure, because I have a question, just about when you talk about a hotel of a hundred and fifty rooms as being some sort of industry standard, in terms of space, does that include, like, dining areas, um, entry areas, kitchens?
So the, the one fifty is just capping the units.
So it doesn't address at all the proportion of space for.
Right.
A number of units to the number of, um, common areas that you would have.
Exactly, so where that would be capped is by the, for a floor area, which has a cap. So, you know, an individual developer is going to have to weigh how much of the space they want to dedicate to community amenities versus, um, units.
Explain how you ended up with these numbers and all, is, is, the very first draft had numbers, had maxims, and I, and I said, based on what? Well, and then I said, what, it seems to me, why don't you come up with the size of building that seems reasonable for each of the sites, you know, overall, the size of building, and then what could fit into that, a building of that size? And so then that's how she came to the numbers. Some of the numbers turned out to be too high to be, you know, to work, you know, to be, that's why there was the cap. But so, it, it was the focus, because that was the concern, right, is the, the what? So you, you arrived at the what you want, and then what can fit in buildings of that size?
Right, right, start with that.
Right, so it started with the box.
And then that's what it came up with.
It started with the box, and then what would fit in that box?
So what, so you, you can have a, a higher end, more space on common rooms and wide corridors and lots of amenities, and restaurants, and salons, and massages, and I don't know what, but in fewer rooms, thus probably less traffic. So you can, you know, but that's a different kind of project, that, you know, that might be more appropriate than one that tries to stuff in as many rooms in its box as possible. For us. I don't know how.
Kind of encourage that kind of.
Right, how to encourage that.
You're partially encouraging by lowering from one fifty down to one hundred.
Yeah, so you say there are fewer rooms allowed, and then you have a greater.
Maybe seventy-five, just because the industry standard in other places is a hundred and fifty.
Right, so that's what I, that's kind of where I was going, Larry, yeah, that, make it, make it a different allocation of that space.
I mean, because Ashley, you looked at it to see whether it made any sense.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a hundred for the hotel room.
Well, I don't know, I mean, we're just saying that because it's a round number, but.
Well, that was, that was the definition of boutique hotels, a hundred rooms or less, so, we always talk about a boutique hotel.
We did, right, so I was back.
It was a boutique hotel.
It's ten to a hundred, is what they said, yeah, so they pick a different number.
And who was that?
Ten is, uh, it's.
So you, yeah, I mean, you already have.
Not industry. So then I, I certainly think going down to a hundred.
Why don't you look at, look at seventy-five, look at, and eighty, and a hundred, see if they.
Yes, right, a, a hundred seems like the, the top, but some of those other tops might be better tops.
And what about on the, on the, on the other thing?
The, uh, assisted living?
Assisted living and.
I think we always, we always came back to, like, it was like ninety was the magic number at Brightview, it was not that.
That's the one that they wouldn't go.
Where's the table, table five, is that the one?
Table three.
Table three.
Well, interestingly, that, with the assisted living, that's what it comes up with.
Right, and that's what I said was interesting to me, too, because like, we were failing, got, one twenty was too much still, and we were trying to talk about how to put it down even lower.
No, but, but wait a minute, but they, they were talking, they were talking about beds, though, weren't they? Were they talking about beds or units? This is, this is rooms, right?
This is rooms.
This is units, it could be more beds.
Sure, some percentage more beds.
We could, we could look that back up, I guess.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Assisted living is single rooms, memory care can be doubles.
Assisted living, okay.
Oh, independent living is where you could have.
Oh, yeah, that's true, independent was the.
Yeah, and independent.
Where you have like bedrooms. I mean, some of the memory care units now have, um, like suites so the spouse can stay.
So, I don't, I don't know the number, but, um, comparison to what we thought about before, I guess would make some sense. If we look at that final proposal.
Well, you remember, because you, was it, was it one twenty beds or one?
I think it was one twenty beds, it was one twenty beds, it was ninety units and a hundred and twenty beds, so, that included memory care and.
Where they were, where they were at. Oh, but the, the truth is, by the very end, I think people were reasonably.
Yeah.
They just decided to walk.
It's, it's not a big, it's, right, so that was a big concern, it was, with them, it was just about the massing of the building.
So the other thing to look at with that line, I mean, the, the building's capped at eighty-eight thousand square feet, so, you know, once you, it would be some factor between, you know, the eighty-eight together, and they might dedicate more of that space to, um, amenity space, so it could be, that would bring it down.
Yeah, because I think that number's small, I actually think that fifteen percent of gross floor area is.
It's too small.
It's, it just seems to me to be small. It's based on some of the, the things we saw, they have like, you know, movie rooms.
I mean, a super high end one might have a higher percentage, but this is trying to give you a.
You probably, most likely what you're going to get here, because the properties are so expensive and square feet high end.
Because here's the issue, if you remember Brightview, I distinctly remember they had two restaurants and two movie theaters, and two, remember that, because one was for, for memory care, and one was for.
I've got the plans right here. Getting, you had to change a lot. Yeah, there's a moving target. I'm not going to research it now. I've got all the documents. Yeah, but I've got all the documents here.
Ashley, if you don't find it on there, I think it might, let me know, because I've got all the files.
Okay.
I mean, for a first pass, and this is good, this is the first time we've looked at this as a group, um, as well as discussed it, you know, I think to me it's a, it's a heck of a start for something that seems like, you know, I, I didn't frankly know where to start, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think this is a very practical way to do it, I think having some more kind of ground view, bird's eye views is important. I think that was, that was to us, that was the key to the whole Brightview proposal was, you know, the architecture got better, and to me, the, the, the number of rooms and the number of beds and all that stuff was okay, for me, it was literally just a setback in the, the looming nature over Broadway, so I think that, you know.
And they did, because of the way they ended up by doing the subfloor, they ended up getting a lot of space and they could reduce the front facade, the impact of the front facade, they pushed it. I'd say, remember, it was two hundred and fifty feet back, but maybe it was.
Yeah, we'll double check that, too. So I think that's the one, you know, we spent so much time on that, if we can, you kind of recycle those.
Do you know what the Crowe Building is now?
How many feet of setback, or the white building?
It looks like it's got to be at least a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, it's probably about three fifty, because this is a one hundred and twenty-five.
So it's probably about three hundred, because it went up a little bit, I think it was probably about three hundred, it did come forward, so.
Because, yeah, I think originally it was like, it went forward by a hundred feet, and then they moved it back.
Yeah, I think it was around three hundred.
Because that's when they realized that they could actually build it, use a slope to their benefit.
Yep.
And if it, if it, I don't know if it matters in here, but the idea of the, um, the totally screened, doesn't look like a parking structure, structure that might make some project more viable, have an objection to that.
I don't think I have a subject here.
Okay, right, but it's, it is in the code right now.
We'll be all lined up against the far square squad wall, but I don't think we're objecting to that.
I think, I think what makes sense is maybe make some of these, you know, see, see what kind of, you know, feedback you've got, interpreted everything, um, then we did this again, had another work session.
I have to say that I agree, Brian, this is very nice, this is very nicely done, I didn't expect it to be at this degree of comprehensibility.
Yeah, it's much quicker than I thought, I was, no way she's getting it done this quick.
Yes, thank you, this was really clear, very helpful, and this was very.
I love your little pictures of what F A R means, you just said that to me, and whenever somebody mentions it, I'm going to use it as a.
You got it!
I know, it was. I'll keep it here, I'll just.
You're looking at electronic.
I keep it on your phone. Joking, but I, every time I think that, somebody explains it to me, and I go like, oh, I forget how, how you figure that, so anyway.
We talked about trees and birds longer than this took you to do it, than about the Brightview proposal.
We're all so good, I was also thinking about the beautiful idea we had once about the landscaping being not lawn, but a, a meadow, and it was so much more environmentally appropriate than just lots of grass and grass and grass, and I don't know if that's something you just encourage, or you.
That's a good point.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I mean, the, the plan, the code as drafted would require a detailed landscaping plan for the project.
Just, every time I look at the acres of, of regular lawn, I think, how silly, how silly, why not have, you know, more natural plants? They look better.
Keep discussing it themselves.
Pollinator pathways.
Thanks, this is a great, a great initial shot at this, and, you know, take another shot, uh, you know, the whole, for public, and all that kind of stuff. But this was great, first shot.
Yes, nicely done.
Give some context. Something that we had a lot of context on. And I missed it, I heard I missed a good discussion.
You can watch it.
I missed a lot. You want your water, I can.
No, I'm going to come back.
Okay. I was too big here of the stuff, but we'll, we'll get you back.
I would.
Got to finish, got to finish.
We want to watch what you're doing.
This is a middle school dance, all the boys and women. Puritan, uh, meeting, so.
Right, right.
So what did I miss? We have a replay of the meeting up there if you'd like.
You heard some rentals?
We were planning to, but.
We kept saying, without Brian.
We're not going to, we're not going to do anything.
You know, I, I, I sent an email, the highlighting didn't come down on, on the. Yeah, but here, go to page three, uh, those are the only two, um.
Okay, and A, remember, Brian Jensen suggested that, um, this language, you know, this idea, for at least ninety up to a hundred and eighty days, the owner must see the dwelling must be physically in residence at such dwelling during periods in which the rooms are rented, and there was some disagreement.
What was the, what was the problem we were solving for with the additional, with that new language?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The problem we were solving for with the ninety days of people in the house?
I'm going to ship them to the building for the sole purposes of S T R use.
So we were hearing from two different groups, like the people who, when their owner wasn't there, and the people who were trying to make, you know, to stay in their homes by generating more income, and the people who are using it, obviously it's always making money, but it's a really an investment opportunity, and people who are trying to have people there while they're there so that they can stay in their homes, and this seemed to, at least to me, I said this inspiration came, I was walking the dock to try to.
Split that.
Well, here, both sides, I mean, one lady stood up at the end and said, a hundred and eighty days, that's like every other night, I'm going to have a new person next door. Well, no, I mean, you do have to wash the sheets, but, um, and I understand why a hundred and eighty days makes sense in terms of you're paying for, um, the inspection and you're going to have to make some investment probably in order to possibly bring it up to code and all of the rest, but I, it seemed to me this was one way to try to address both concerns.
And, and Brian, there was some disagreement, that's why I, we decided what we would do is put the language in and people could look at it, see how it fits in, and then that would, we would discuss it tonight.
What was the disagreement?
Well, this, this is what I was thinking about, um, not, you know, I, I get where you're coming from, and I get the, you know, there are, there are different points of view, but my feeling is the people that don't want this, that don't want ninety days, they don't want a hundred and eighty days, they, it's that they don't want people on their block in, in their neighborhood that they don't know, it's not that the owner is there or not there so much as these are people that are just coming unknown, you know, they don't know the, you know, the, the, going slow in that street, they don't know that there's, that, they, they don't know a lot of things, so I don't know that this solves the problem of the people who don't want it, but it does create that, you know, concern about the economic, um, burden of the person who's, yes, they're, they're doing their, their short-term rent, about if I'm going to bother to do this and get the maybe fire escape, maybe, you know, pay the fee and all, that, you know what, I can't do it, I'm not going to do it unless I know I can set it up this way, and, you know, that they're, we know they have to be, they have to have somebody available, that's, I mean, that's, that's a big part of, you have to solve the problem, so.
What we want is to be is an alter, alternative investment opportunity to create effectively a new kind of, uh, hotel or apartment breakfast by another name.
I'm not thinking of it that way, I'm thinking of that person.
That's how I'm thinking about it.
Well, that's why, yeah, well, I'm thinking of it as a person. No, I, I, I get that, I think of, of, you know, renter A, and, and she, she knows when she has her place rented, she stays with her mother, you know, she's nearby, but she's not in the house, so it, it.
But that doesn't preclude some, include the investment.
Do we make it, do we make it something that has to be their primary residence?
It does have to be. Yes.
Basically, how do you prove primary?
So would somebody come.
Revoke and everything, I don't know.
So we come in and you buy, I'm trying to think through your problems, and I, you know, I really, I'm, I'm trying to, listen, maybe, maybe I agree with it, but.
I think it's, I think they can't buy three houses in a row, they rent them out, because they, those all can't be their.
They can't all be your primary residence.
But they can buy two houses.
Well, they both can't be their primary residence.
Right, only one can be your primary.
They can't rent them both down for a hundred and eighty days.
That they could be living in one and renting out the other, calling it their primary residence.
Wait, tell me, can you? That's against the law, right?
No, but they could, but they could live in, in Dobbs Ferry and buy a house in Irvington and split, split it some way, I mean, aren't there people that have two homes and vote in both places by mistake, and don't do it necessarily on purpose, but.
I don't think you can both be a primary residence. Yeah, why is your primary residence?
Yeah, the voting, voting is, is where you make your domicile. That's what they, that's the word that's used in the law, from what I remember.
And it's for a lot of things.
But, but that also, well, but, but taxes then starts to get to actual days. And, yeah, there's lots of different things.
So we, when we started the discussion, we said 90 days. That's what we were prepared to permit. And then we were, we pushed it up, and I wasn't comfortable, but, but we pushed it up because of the costs involved, and because of the compelling case of the people who really needed to stay. My impression was that we were looking to push up the number of days to allow people to make more money off their houses, so much as to allow people to stay in their houses. It seemed to me a balance.
Right, if you're not, it's fine. If you push it up to 180 so they can stay in their houses, but they're not staying in their house, then.
Well, on the week, on those days, on those.
Yeah, that's half a year, though, they're not staying in their house. It's kind of like, that's why I thought it made sense to me to put something.
I don't really have a strong feeling either way, to be honest, because I, I think that not even on that 100 of these rentals are not going to, we're not even going to know they're happening, you know, like, and, and this goes to the next thing, that was the only time we've ever had to complain about any of these. Wasn't because someone was staying in the house and they didn't know not to go slow, that there's a child that lives on the end that, you know, plays on his tracing pool.
Right.
And it's crazy that there's this transit thing going on. It was all about B, which is completely unrelated to short-term rental.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure if that's necessarily true. I think that we're talking about again, the bad actor in B, but I think in A, there, there are people that complain. There's, there's people that complain about what's happening.
Yeah, right.
On the theory, though, that there's a lot of people from, you know, Florida coming and staying on my block, and they're not going to notice.
So I think that, so I think that's why this suggestion by Janis, I think, is.
Which is fine, which is fine.
Ends up making everybody unhappy.
Which means we're probably in the right place, if both sides are not.
But how does it address, I'm sorry, but how does it address the, the fact that 180 of those days is people from.
There's a 90, and then there's the person being home monitored, you know, directly monitoring that activity. As opposed to them not being.
Yeah, and I also think.
And again, I agree that for a person who doesn't want anybody there, but at least we're saying to them, we hear you, we're just not doing what you want. We're, we're compromising in some way, and giving you a, a bit of what you want, but not what you want, because we're not going to outdo it.
I do, I do think that the vast majority of people are either going to have a six-month sublet, which they don't have to worry about this at all, because it's more than 30 days, or they're going to do it much less than 90 days anyway. So I actually think this is something we're arguing about in theory on both sides. The theory that I'm going to be able to run the greatest Airbnb and pay off everything, and then the theory that there's going to be every night, 180 different people that are going to want to stay on my house on Riverbury Road in Irvington. Like, none of it, it's, it'd be both, both sides of it that are nonsense.
You've got to get a better house.
Seriously. They have to have a nice pool in the back or something. So to me, to me, we could start, that's why to me, 90 days versus 180 days, how many people, I actually successfully rented for 180 days. That wasn't the whole, I'm gone for the whole summer, which just doesn't, it doesn't even apply, if it's more than 30 days.
You want to rent your house for three months? You rent your house for three months? You don't even.
You don't have to worry about it.
90 days is, as the P, during the discussion, 90 days is like every weekend.
Exactly.
But we're saying, you could, with, letting you do that.
So to me, this is almost like a moot point, like, either one, you could have it with or without, because I don't think it's going to be a practical thing. So I, I think it's, I think this is fine if it makes a couple people less nervous about.
I think it just, I think it helps that we hear, we hear what the concerns are, and we've had two different interest groups, we have several interest groups, and in terms of the people who are going to do this.
I guess then, then I get a little more. To say again, I don't think that the people who really don't want this will feel any comfort by this. So if that's the goal, I don't think we've achieved it.
We're not going to make everybody happy. We, we have never made everybody.
No.
The problem here is, it's one of those items that I don't think is enforceable, so.
I'd rather, you know, leave it by our language, we'll stick with that, and not change it, but, you know.
Yes, we need, okay. I think it's all locked out. We need to vote on it for, you know, for the draft.
Well, is, is it, does anyone see it as enforceable? That's the question I have.
Well, I'm going to go back to.
Most people are right there.
Most people obey the law. The people who don't, you know, it could, yes, it could be tricky to enforce, but the thing is, most people follow the law.
And if they're referring, they're going to lose their right to do it.
But I think it's true.
That used to be true.
Yeah, I know, yeah, you're right. It's a different world, right?
Hopefully it'll be true sooner than later.
Yeah. All right. So Jim, as you're looking at the language, did you have some issue with the, it said the intent is that you can rent it out for 90 days if you're not there. Well, it says for at least 90 of these days. It can be rented out for 180 days. For at least 90 of these days, the owner must be physically pregnant.
But for the first 90, they don't. So you can rent it for 90 days without you being there? It's, it's just not true. It says that, okay.
Okay, so I know how, but you, you, you're voting yay.
I'm voting, I'm voting against that shape.
Okay, okay, Brian, you don't care.
Yes or no?
You got to vote.
Who do you think will say?
I'm just kidding.
If I need a time break, I would. I'd say yeah.
Okay.
So, if you remember the one thing, too, the one, the one argument against this that Leopold was trying to give, she actually undermined herself.
Yeah, you, you rooted her out on that one.
Yeah, because she said she could actually handle it by discussions.
Right. Which is the right answer.
Okay, all right. No problem. Hold on. Then the other one, okay, the language now reads, a short-term rental will not be used to host parties.
It's a nice paragraph. B.
Or other gatherings or events at the dwelling. And Nikki suggested this language, lunches, banquets, parties, weddings, meetings, charitable fundraising, commercial, or advertising activities, or other gatherings for direct or indirect compensation. I don't really like that language, because I don't want to get into whether the direct or indirect compensation. Lunches, dinners, breakfasts, cocktail parties, brunches.
I look at all of these things, and I think it's covered by parties or, or lunch, and I, you know, banquet.
I mean, if you want to say something like.
Definitely, you have to leave something out with this list.
I mean, if you say host any kind of parties or other gatherings.
I mean, I'm looking at a couple things, like to host weddings, parties, meetings, banquets, meetings, or other gatherings.
Other gatherings needs to cover every.
It's a baby reveal party, and I'm having brunch. That doesn't count, you know?
No, but this, this list doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be written as being.
No, but what happens, Mark, is when people say, this is not on this list.
By making it more specific.
Oh, then including but not, including but not limited to.
That just gets.
It's, yeah, it's problematic.
Well, that works in English.